The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruessin, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Vommer, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Carter. Twenty present.
A quorum being present, unless everyone in chambers and galleries is able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We will suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption our courtesy resolution, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, Alderwoman from the first, would you like to approach the dais?
Good morning. Mr. President, oh, we already passed the courtesy resolution, okay? I'm here today, and I don't do courtesy resolutions very often, but this was something that I thought was very important and needed to be addressed. Oftentimes, in African-American community, there is an agenda put out that says that we are crooks, criminals, we don't care about our community, and it's very negative. And I'm always talking to the press for years and years about the everyday African-American just goes about their own lives doing what they're supposed to do, okay? They're not crooks, they're not criminals. We don't deserve to be treated any less. We have all the same rights and Constitution. And mostly, we're just boring people who want the same things that everybody else want. We live our lives very quietly. And especially, I have that concern about African-American men, and I've expressed that over the years, because I have a really good husband as a black man, and I don't like the message that's put out there about African-American men. So sometimes you have to put your own press out because others put a wrong press out. And especially about my community, I continually tell people that North St. Louis is not monolithic, that it is very diverse, and we have neighborhoods. So when I hear on the news that they talk about Tile Grove Park or the Hill or the Central West End, and then they say, "and North St. Louis", that really irritates me because we have sixty some odd neighborhoods in North St. Louis. We are the neighborhoods of North St. Louis. I proudly live in the neighborhoods of North St. Louis, and so do most of the people who live there. Many, many people could live someplace else. They choose to live there. And again, they want all the same things. What's really striking, and why I have this resolution, is because last year, Lotus, which is in the fifty through the fifty-two-hundred block of Lotus, is in the Kingsway West neighborhood in North St. Louis. And last year, some men got together, and they decided that they wanted to do something to celebrate where they lived. And they were particularly happy because our neighborhood was tore up, we're redistricting in 2001, and now we're put back together again, and most of it. And so they had a big block party. And the men planned everything. They did everything, and it was such a success. And they had people who'd come back from years and years to just come and visit the block because they were happy. One of the people who came back was the Times family. And these, so I have two actually resolutions, and it's important to know that, we didn't know at the time the Father Lou Times would pass, but he did. So we have his son JR here along with the men and their family because they were back there part of the block party. But the block party was so successful, they're already planning another one, and the people were just so happy. And again, I think that you have to put your own press out and how appreciative I am of these men for what they did. And the women on the block were so appreciative of it. And so I would like to take time to read this resolution, and then I would like to present the resolution to several of the men. But I wanted to tell you that, one of the things that happened is that one of the men passed away after they had the block party. In January, when we had the big snow, he was out shoveling snow, and he passed away. And part of this resolution speaks to that those other men who were part of that group, we couldn't get those city streets cleaned even though we had said we were. The side streets didn't get cleaned. They got out, and you need to know that fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two is a triple block. And Alderman Kennedy knows that because when we did that illegal redistricting, he picked up my ward part of it. And they got out, and they cleaned three triple blocks of snow so that when the family had to deal with their loved ones and griefs, grieavement, and people coming to visit, that they would have a clean street for people to be able to visit Lotus. And I just think that that is, again, marvelous. And that's the kind of things that neighbors do. And I always talk to my community about that neighbors are your family. You can't get rid of them, okay? So you better learn how to get along with them. I don't want to get rid of my neighbors. I've always had very good neighbors. I talked about Mr. Williams, who lived to be almost a hundred and two, loved him. Now my neighbor is ninety-five, so I'm so fortunate with the neighbors that I have. But Lotus has always celebrated their block, and they've always had a very good block unit. And I'd like to take this time to read this resolution and then present it to the families. It says, "Whereas on September twenty-first, 2013, the triple block of Lotus Avenue, fifty thousand through fifty-two hundred in the Kingsway West neighborhood of North St. Louis, celebrated its first United Block Party. And the original ideal and planning for this event came from five men who lived on the block. And whereas these men not only planned this block party, but they also prepared and cooked all the ribs, hamburgers, hot dogs, chicken, fish, as well as reunited other block residents to provide side dishes, I'm sorry, recruited other block residents to provide side dishes to go along with the prepared meals. Whereas in addition to the cooking and recruiting of others to provide side dishes, they also made contact with out-of-town family members and friends who grew up on the block to request their attendance and to greet and to come to this great celebration. And much to their surprise, the response was phenomenal, and the block party morphed into a beautiful, heartwarming, tear-filled family reunion, which is what I think block parties ought to be. And whereas the children played on huge bounce houses and were served snow cones and cotton candy treats, which was a big hit with everyone. Horses trotted down the block for children's entertainment, and every young person received a bag of treats. A DJ was hired for music entertainment. Special honors were given to the oldest person living on the block and to the first African-American family that moved on the block in nineteen fifty-one. And the men pulled off one of the best United Block Parties in the history of St. Louis. And whereas the team of men understood the importance of and were committed to community unity, that commitment continued through the 2013-14 fall and winter seasons. And while continuing this, working together for the fifty through the fifty-two-hundred blocks of Lotus, tragedy struck on January fifth, 2014, when one of the men, Mr. Orin Clark, passed away after shoveling snow at his home. Whereas in January 2014, there was a historic amount of snowfall in the city of St. Louis, and the snowfall reached a height which made it impossible for the city of St. Louis to plow the city's side streets. Yet it was imperative to have the fifty through the fifty-two-hundred blocks of Lotus cleared of snow and ice from the streets for the grieving family of Mr. Clark who was planning their loved ones' funeral services. And whereas the four remaining friends discussed a possible solution to the snow dilemma, and their solution was to clear the streets of snow and ice themselves. And therefore, one cold day in January 2014, Mr. Clark's four friends worked tirelessly from early morning until late afternoon to clear the streets and sewer drains of snow and ice so that by evening, the entire block, triple block of Lotus was cleared, making way for the grieving family and friends of Mr. Clark to pass on the street, to park on the street during their time of mourning. And whereas there's a constant search for people, especially men, who are willing to volunteer and serve in our communities and thereby set an example for the next generation of what true community means and set an example through their actions for some of the things that a real man does to help his community. And whereas the residents of Lotus Avenue are grateful to the men who live on their block, who are willing to give of themselves and for the peace and safety of the community, and look forward to these men continuing to be a beacon of light for our community to follow. And as such, the four surviving men have begun plans for the 2014 Block Party Family Reunion, whose motto is, "The neighborhoods of North St. Louis are wonderful places to live, and together we can make it better." Whereas there is often negative attention given to those who do wrong, but very little attention goes and attention and appreciation for those who, every day, do the right thing, or for those who go about their everyday duty or go above and beyond their duty in doing the right thing. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Honorable Board of Aldermen join the sponsor of the resolution and the residents of Lotus in expressing their deepest appreciation and heartfelt thank you to Mr. Jimmy Lattimore, Mr. Larry Hearns, Mr. Modia Reed, and Mr. John Weaver, and posthumously to Mr. Orin Clark for the services and commitment to the fifty, fifty-two-hundred block of Lotus in the Kingsway West neighborhood in the beautiful city of St. Louis, Missouri. Be it further resolved that the chief clerk of this honorable board be instructed to prepare properly inscribed copies of this resolution to present to Mr. Lattimore, Mr. Hearns, Mr. Reed, Mr. Weaver, and the family of Mr. Clark at the appropriate time and place. Introduce this twenty-seventh day of June, Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman First Ward. At this time, I'd like for the men to step forth, oops, and I'd like to make the presentation. What's your name?
Larry Hearns.
This is Mr. Larry.
Are you there?
This Larry Hearns. This is Mr. Larry Hearns, okay. This is Mr. Reed. This is Mr. Lattimore. And this is Ms. Carla Woodland, who is here representing the family of Mr. Orin Clark. Okay, did any of you all want to speak? Okay, the gentlemen are also shy, so they don't have anything to say. They obviously are not related to me. I want to thank you all, and I appreciate it. And if you all would just stand here, we're going to do the resolution with JR and his family, and then we will take some maybe group pictures. If you want to stand right over there a little bit. Thank you. Okay, and so, in keeping with the joint resolution, when was this, Tuesday? That's your father's funeral? On Tuesday, I attended the funeral of Mr. Lou Times along with the President and the fourth ward Alderman. And I had represented Mr. Times for a long time, and sometimes you don't know what you don't know. Since I have been in politics now twenty-three years, I have discovered the treasure of people that I represent that have been so historic before me and that the shoulders that I stand on. And one of them was Lou Father Times. And I didn't know him that way because I didn't grow up in St. Louis. But from the minute that my husband heard that he passed, he walked around, and those of you all who knew black radio, because black radio was very important back in the sixties and seventies, because that was the way black people had to tell what was going on, and we were trying to change and get civil rights. And the minute that he heard that he had passed, he walked around saying, "Father, Father, Father." So I'm looking at him like, "What is that, okay? Because I don't know that. That's what happens when you don't grow up in St. Louis." But he then sat down and told me all the stories and said, "You know, that's JR's dad, and that's Denise's dad," because many of you may know the name Denise Times, who is a very famous vocalist, and JR is very famous in his own right in radio. But I didn't know how important Mr. Times was. I just knew that he worked here in City Hall and walked around, and that I represented him, and that when he and his wife called me and said, "I need some new sidewalk, or the alley's not clean," or whatever, that that was my response. But when I got to read his obituary and saw all the important things that he did, I was so impressed, and I was so sad that I hadn't taken more time to get to know him. I did know his children, but I didn't take more times because our treasures are in the spoken word and with the people who tell us about our history. Sometimes when we get successful, we think it's all about us. I have been blessed to know none of it is about Sharon Tyus. Any little bit of success I have is because there are a lot of people who made it an opportunity for Sharon Tyus to go forth. And that's why I fight so hard down here for my community because I think it's my responsibility to take what they've given me and move forward. So knowing that what Mr. Father Lou Times did, it's my responsibility to make sure that that ball moves forward. But in saying about Father Lou Times, I want to say he was also a father. And I cannot follow JR because he was so eloquent in his speech at the funeral about the difference between the father and father. He was the father to his children. He was Father Lou Times on the radio. And I had made that point just because I knew his children, that I knew, when I heard Father, 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 I thought of Denise, JR, Kelly. So I thought of his children. I did not get how important it was. When I got to St. Louis in seventy-eight, it was Jochen Styler, and he was W-W-W-W-E-S-L, and I loved that because I was like, "Whoa, this is great." But I would like to read this resolution, and I'm going to, we already presented it at the funeral, but I wanted him to come here because I'm also introducing a board bill that would rename the fifty through the fifty-two-hundred block of Lotus, Father Lou Times Honorary Avenue. And so I wanted to, I wanted JR to be here so you all could hear this because I just think that it is absolutely important that we understand the importance of Father Lou, Lou Father Times, I'm sorry. And Resolution eighty-seven says, "Whereas Lou Father Times was born in St. Louis on October eighteenth, nineteen twenty-eight, graduated from Booker T. Washington Tech High and went to historic Lincoln University on a basketball scholarship. And whereas Lou Father Times married Mildred DeWalt in the mid-nineteen fifties and produced three sons, Edrick, Reginald, and Lou Junior, and four daughters, Denise, Deborah, Patrice, and Kelly. And whereas Lou Father Times, while serving in the United States Army, began a radio career that spanned over sixty-five years, having one of the most recognizable voices, was able to lead St. Louis from the fifties and turbulent sixties through recent times, introducing the legion of fans and families to scores of artists celebrating gospel and rhythm and blues. And whereas Lou Father Times broadcast career gained him hundreds of local awards, he was one of the first St. Louisans elected to the National Association of Television and Radio Anouncers. A St. Louis Lifetime Achievement Award in 2010 was a legacy inductee in the St. Louis Radio Hall of Fame. And whereas Lou Father Times was a longstanding employee of the city of St. Louis, logged in almost fifty years between Human Development Corporation of Metropolitan St. Louis and the city license collector. And whereas, I'm sorry, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen for the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize, acknowledge, and remember Lou Father Times as one of the city's cultural treasures and an important and significant part of our city's St. Louis-rich and diverse two-hundred-and-fifty-year history, and hereby direct the clerk of this board to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end, that it may be presented to the Times family at a time and a place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this twentieth day of June by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman First Ward, Honorable Samuel Moore, Alderman Fourth Ward, Honorable Louis Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen. And I have here, as I said, the real JR, who is Lou Times Junior, here to present this resolution. And JR will not fail me because he will, of course, have something to say. And thank you so much for all the contributions you do and for what you've done. And he has a guest that I would like him to acknowledge and introduce.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman Tyus, Mr. President, to the entire board, to my Lotus gang. On behalf of the Times family, it is truly an honor to be here this morning. I felt like I kind of grew up in this building since my dad had worked down here for so many years, and I brought him lunch, and in some cases, sometimes even lunch money. So I kind of grew up in this building. As a matter of fact, I saw the same gentleman on the door that I've been seeing ever since I was almost a child who's standing over here. So it's truly an honor to be here in a dual role, and that is as the son of Lou Father Times, as Sharon mentioned, a legend and icon and pioneer, but also as a member of the Lotus Group because my dad, of course, we grew up on Lotus. And I look at my dad as being one of the founding fathers of that block. We grew up at fifty-one, fifty-one Lotus. And it was a, it was a long block from Union to King Highway, from fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. And we celebrated, and I showed up, and it was, it was a tearjerker because you saw people that you hadn't known and quite, haven't seen in quite some time. And ironically, Tina's brother, Orwin Clark, was my best friend. We came up in grade school together, to high school, and we joined on each other's parents, Matty and Thomas. I ate food over their house, Orwin ate over my house. So it was such a loss to not only lose a Lotus Block member, but also to lose truly my best childhood friend as well as my best adulthood friend. So it was an honor to be there, and it was also an honor to be his friend. Thank you from my sister Denise, and of course, we get all the recognition, but you, 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 I'm glad you mentioned the other members of our family. There were seven of us, but Denise and I seem to get the attention because we did, in fact, follow in my dad's footsteps. So I thank you for this resolution. I thank you for all the support that many of you in one way, shape, form, or fashion have given to us, our family, as well as our careers, respectively, my dad, my sister, and myself. Alderman Moore, thank you very much for all the support that you've given us when we opened up our barbecue place, which was my dad's dream. Alderman Moore was our first customer, and he was there to make sure that the doors opened. Real quickly, I also want to thank a young man that not only did he take my job at the radio station, and not only is he now trying to duplicate and mimic and imitate a legend, Lou Father Times, with his oldie show on Saturdays where he plays all of my dad's songs that he stole from him. And I call him my friend. Can you believe that? But I want to acknowledge my good friend. He's here today, and he's two people in one. And many of you may know him as Sylvester the Cat on Magic one-hundred-point-three, but he is also the honorable mayor of the great city of Pine Line, Mayor Sylvester Caldwell, who is also here. So thank you, thank you, board. Thank you, Alderwoman Tyus. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everybody that had anything to do with this and for the, for the support that you've given to my dad through those sixty-five years of radio and community service. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to say? Any further discussion, any further discussion? Further discussion? I also want to say thank you to the Lotus Block Group and certainly Jay, the real JR, and his family and Lou for all of his works throughout the city, putting St. Louis on the map all over the United States. But you know, what's important about what the Lotus Group has done is not just for the people that had been there and lived there and them coming together, but the other thing that you're doing is you're passing on that legacy and that history to the young kids so that, so that the people that are moving on beyond us, they have that instilled in them. They understand that that's their community, that's where their roots are, and it is, it, I think that's amazing, and I think that's significant in and of itself because we oftentimes miss out on the fact that we are indeed, every day through our actions, working to pass the torch to our young folks. So let's give them one more round of applause, and thank you for that. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, I'd like to introduce as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Andre Williams, the committee man for the twenty-second ward hiding in the corner over there, and Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with AGC, Gina Hackenworth with LeCleod, and Mr. Brian Williams with Congress and Clay's office.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour and Officer Laurie Woznick.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I failed to announce, and I think she's coming around now. With us is Ms. Barbara Martin, who is the president of Area B of the United Federation of Block Units, and she lives on Lotus. And then also Ms. Ramsey Kaliba, who is the chair of a person of a combination blocks, the fifty through the fifty-one, fifty-two-hundred blocks of Highland and Wabbera, and who lives in fifty-fifty Highland and is a dynamic person and gets things done, and the families of these honored men who are with us. I don't have all of their names, but just wanted to recognize all of them and thank them for the support of coming down and thank them for lending their men to the community.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. My honored guest today would be you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you.
Okay? And I've lost a lot of respect for you. As long as your last name is Reed, you don't come to my ward mean disrespecting me like that, okay? If you've got something to say to me, you come talk to me.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have my honored guest today Jeff Hans. He's also a neighbor from the Carpenter's District and his colleague Keith Taylor.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest Mr. John Collins, the president of the Collegiate One Hundred at Lincoln University, and Mrs. Sierra Semerall, who runs my neighborhood ownership model in the twenty-seventh ward. Thanks.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today Mr. Brian Sullivan from the Board of Elections. Also, Ms. Gina Hankenworth, representative from LeCleod Gas, Chris Pickle, and Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T. So I know I'm duplicating some, but I want to introduce some of my special guests. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Any further introductions, any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I, I'm sorry, just move for, um. Approval of the minutes?
Been moved by, June 13th, it's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 6th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have to mis-honored the mayor the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Commission. The appointment of Mr. Chris Summers, a resident of the 28th Ward and whose term will expire on September the 30th, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slimer, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Taxi Met- Metropolitan Taxi Cab Commission.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the approval of Mr. Chris Summers to the Taxi Cab.
Moved by Alderman from the 8th, entertain the second. Seconded by Alderman from the 24th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We will dispense with line items 7 through 10, first reading of Board Bill.
Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Ernest, approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the 1831 through 8 through 2000 Sydney Street Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Ernest pertaining to enforcement of code violations relating to the health and safety and enforced by the Department of Health, containing a penalty clause and an effective date. Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver a memorandum of agreement in substantially the form attached here to and incorporated by reference herein as stable, herein as Exhibit 1 by and among the city and by state Development Agency of Missouri, Illinois Metropolitan District for the purpose of providing trash removal services and receptacles at designated metro, metro bus stops by the City Refuge Division as specified in memorandum agreement for a term of one year in the amount of $200,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 96, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Ernest authorizing and directing the street commission to take all necessary actions to honorably designate Providence Place between Minnesota and Michigan as Napstein Place. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderwoman from the 1st. Alderwoman from the 1st. Reference the committee.
To the Ways and Means Board Bill 93, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 94, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 95, and to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 96. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of Legislation Committee, Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderman Con and Ernest with appeal, Chapter 15.86 of the St. Louis Revise Code relating to fortune tellers. Following Board Bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Williamson and French, and Ernest establishing the Office of Financial Empowerment. Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and Ernest authorizing execution of commercial lease with an option to purchase between the city and RNC Company and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill 51, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Ernest relating to Ernest 65857 pertaining to the redevelopment agreement between the city and Grand Center Incorporated as amended, affirming, affirming adoption of an application for tax abatement for them. 634 North Grand Project and related parking and parking lot improvements and containing a severability clause. Board Bill number 70, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Ernest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4517 through 25 South Kings Highway and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Davis and Ernest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1515 through 21 South 39th Street, 3901 through 05, 3907 through 09 Folsom, 3861 through 69 McCree, 3867 Lafayette, and containing a severability clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill 20, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and Ernest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5223 Elizabeth containing a severability clause. Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3822 Flad containing a severability clause. Board Bill 72, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Ernest moving a redevelopment plan for 2622 through 24 Cherokee. Board Bill 73, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3023 through 25 Allen and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3818 through 20 Arsenal and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3433, 3433 McKean and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 77, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2017 Allen and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3150 through 56 South Grand and 3515 through 21 Juniata and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3806 Flad and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 80, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Ernest moving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2629 South 11th Street and containing a severability clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Parks Committee. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Carter and Ernest to remain, rename a public park formerly known as Dwight Davis Park is dedicated as Gregory J. Carter Park. And that's the extent of our second readings.
We will dispense with line item 14, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill 81, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, Alderman Williamson, and Alderwoman Ingracia, and Ernest affirming approval of ordinance number 69609, 69610, 69612, 69614, 69615, and that the effective, affected taxing jurisdictions have been properly notified of a public hearing regarding said ordinances. Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estmen and Apportement, establishing and authorizing public work and improvement program herein entitled Building and Environment Projects, Security Access System Upgrades at Lambert Airport and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, Board of Estmen and Apportement, that provides for financial incentives for air services at Lambert Airport and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 85, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Ernest recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, Board of Estmen and Apportement, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of $2,200,000 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund to the Airport Contingency Fund, further authorizing transfers of funds in a total amount not to exceed $3,204,354 from the Airport Contingency Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 62, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Ernest recommended by the Parking Commission, making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses involving parking division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasuries Office for fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2014 and ending June the 30th, 2015, amounting in aggregate to the sum of $14,738,900 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 65, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and Ernest recommended by the Planning Commission, appropriating the name of a new public street to be located adjacent to the approved North-South Sarah Phase 2 re-subdivision located in City Block 4564. Board Bill 67, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Ernest establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Newstead at Colt Brilliant and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 68, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Ernest directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Ridge from the northeast corner to the southeast corner of 5364 Ridge and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 69, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz and Ernest Arthur, and Ernest establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Tessen and Schroeder Court by regulating all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Tessen at Schroeder Court and regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Schroeder Court at Tessen and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 86, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Ernest pertaining to parking within the 4200 block of Gibson Residential Park District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 4200 block of Gibson Avenue Residential Park District and containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Ernest recommended by the Board of, Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in Pleasant Street from Carter Northly to a point adjacent to the city block 1404 and 1406 in the city. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to move for suspension of the rules so that we can move Board Bill 81 for the perfection consent calendar to the third reading final passage calendar.
I thought it was reading consent.
And consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? Madam Clark, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Kusson. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Kusson. 21 aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman, Alderman, Alderman from the 7th. Spin the rules. Please place Board Bill number 81 on third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 1, Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy. The budget for a two, for fiscal year 2014 through 2015 fiscal year containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill number 1, Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would move for perfection of Committee Substitute for Board Bill number 1.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 23rd. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Board Bill, or Committee Substitute for Board Bill number 1 is the annual city budget for fiscal year 2015. This budget is not significantly different than this year's budget. There has been a slight increase. The entire budget as a part of this appropriation, it's about $1,4 million. Last year was around $984 million. This particular budget that is presented to the Ways and Means Committee by the Budget Director, it's about 1 and 1.9% greater revenue than the previous, than this particular budget year. The committee, well, also the, the basic general fund amount is also slightly up by 1.1%. And in the upcoming budget would be around $484,000. The committee held its series of hearings as it does annually on the budget. This year it held three evening meetings as opposed to two last year. The, one of the evening meetings we know was the one where we received a public comment from people about how they thought the budget should be spent. It was a little bit more difficult this year in terms of holding the evening meetings. We were bumping heads with the baseball Cardinal games for the use of the parking lot on City Hall. So it did have caused some difficulty. The last meeting was held away from City Hall at the Shafley Branch Library, which I'm happy to say was a capacity crowd. We're looking at 150 people or so that came to show up to discuss and hear about the budget. There are not any really major changes in the budget from this year's budget as outlined and presented to, most of us should have received an overview of the budget in the mailboxes earlier this week. There have been a total of some positions that have not been filled in the budget as a means to cut costs. Though there has been about a 1.9% increase, we know that the, the expenses have also increased. So it really does not pan out to additional monies being able to be spent, but really just making sure that the budget is able to, to be balanced. The committee, after hearing from the various departments, made several recommendations. Some of those recommendations included additional monies for park rangers to be able to get four positions as park rangers, to have some in O'Fallon Park and Fairgrounds Park, two for each one of those parks. The committee also made recommendations about additional $10,000 for the Communications Department to do their work. And looked at this, as you know, the, the police budget is now up under the city, so it gives it a little bit more leeway. Out of the asset forfeiture dollars, the committee wanted to take out about $400,000 to deal with youth and community programming. That's one of the major things we heard from people in the public testimony, that they wanted to see more programming for youth and more community programming as a way to begin to curb crime and to give our youth and the community some beneficial types of activities to participate in after school. The committee made a recommendation to allocate about $400,000 out of the millions of dollars that's in the asset forfeiture dollars. After that went to ENA, it came back. It was clear that the asset forfeiture dollars could only use 25% of it for community programming for the dollars that had been collected over the last two years. So that did not mean it was dealing with the same amount of monies. Therefore, only $115,000 would, would actually be allocated to it. But that was something new, that had not been done that way in terms of a recommendation through Ways and Means and the whole budgetary process for that to happen. And that is in direct response to the testimony that the committee got at the hearing over at the Shafley Branch Library. Additional $20,000 went into forestry for grass cutting. The dollars that were recommended to be reduced for the additional park rangers actually ended up being a fund because not everything in the, the police budget was clear as to what could be spent and what could not be cut. This particular dollar out of the police, or they call the peace officer training, is what the committee recommended would be reduced so that it could be allocated to its parks. It turned out that that money, which is a combination of grants and some other things, could not be used in that way. So it ended up being just one park ranger, $20,000 for grass cutting, and $115,000 for youth programming, and then additional $10,000 for communications. Most of us have, of course, our budget books in front of us. That, with those changes that the committee voted with a due pass recommendation to send that on back to ENA, to finally pass it and send it here to the Board of Aldermen, that's the budget that we see here before us today.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 24th.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. First off, I wanted to again thank the Aldermen from the 18th for doing the Ways and Means meetings in the evening. I think that's a huge step forward in giving residents a window into the, into the budget process. I think that's a huge step forward in giving residents a window into the budget process. Obviously, you know, in an annual budget of 470-some million, you can always pick it apart and say, "I don't like this particular thing or that particular thing." I don't want to do that, but I do just want to call or just raise a couple points of concern that I've developed over the years. One is that, sort of related, it's planning and it's BPS, Planning and Public Works. And so I represent one of the wards that does not have a community-based development organization that works in the ward, also does not have sort of institutional support where there's a large institution that provides sort of planning services to the immediate area, or something like the Downtown Partnership, sort of a third-party entity that does these types of planning services. So I really need to be able to rely on Public Works and on planning to provide guidance on infrastructure planning and also to some extent, community planning. And from my perspective, it's just not there. So I've gone to planning with some ideas and I've been told, "Why don't you check back in a year? Maybe we can talk to you then." I've gone to Public Works. I go to the extent of drafting my own ideas, giving them to Public Works. I wanted to do an improvement on a street in one case, and I was told by BPS that I needed to go get my own survey of the street. I needed to go pay for my own survey of the street before they could start working on public improvements to that street. We've got, you know, as everybody knows, we recently passed this Parks Bond Initiative. BPS has more work to do as they plan those Parks Bonds. There's a pretty good probability we'll have another general obligation bond issue that they'll be working on in the future. There's a lot of work for BPS to do. And, you know, unfortunately, right now, some of us don't really have access to them proactively working on stuff for us in our areas. I just have to point out that in a little more than three years in office now, nobody has suggested an infrastructure project to me, other than paving streets. That's the only affirmative suggestion I've had from a city department on an improvement that should be made. And it's, to some extent, it's getting a little frustrating when I see that there are areas that have additional resources they can tap into to do some of that planning work, and then there's a few wards that don't have that capacity. And over time, I think it shows when you don't have the planning services there, the results are not as good. So I just hope, you know, as we go forward and we recognize, Public Works is going to have more work to do the next few years, not less work. We really need to consider beefing up their staffing, and I think we also really need to consider integrating them with planning in a way that they have the capacity to do more reaching out to us and really maybe suggesting agenda items for our areas, because after all, they're supposed to be the professionals in these fields, and I very much would like to rely on their, you know, professional advice. Right now, I just don't have access to it. I mean, the door is shut. Literally, I make a suggestion and they say, "Check back in a year." That means my area doesn't have that service available to them that other areas do, and I would like that to change in the future. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that, again, this budget does not include funding for a position that we might call a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position. You can call this position a variety of different things, but it's basically somebody either within BPS or within the Streets Department that's specifically looking for ways to improve pedestrian safety, pedestrian connectivity, access that pays attention to ADA issues, and that looks for opportunities to improve in those areas, so intersections that desperately need enhancements, you know, these types of things. Or when we are doing a project, the fact is, most civil engineers are trained very much from an automobile-oriented perspective. That's the training they've received when they went through school, and that's sort of very much the approach they take when they look at infrastructure projects. And so, you know, rather than retraining every civil engineer we have, what a ton of cities have done now is they just build in another position that provides a little bit different perspective. And I've been able to visit other Public Works Departments this year in other cities, Chicago, Indianapolis, and speak directly to the people who have that role. Chicago has 40 people, Chicago has 40 people working on bicycle and pedestrian issues. Now, Chicago's a much bigger city. I'm not saying we're going to have anywhere close to 40 people, but right now, we have zero people essentially doing that on behalf of the city. And, you know, I think sometimes you see the results. I see Public Works projects happen. I saw this in my ward. There is a big project, it was a bridge project, and we added a 10-foot multi-use path when we replaced a bridge, the Wellington Bridge, a couple of years ago. And the project area was scoped so that it did not connect to the closest adjacent sidewalk. So we spent, it was a $5-million bridge that we built, that we rebuilt, that had to be rebuilt, and it didn't connect to the nearest sidewalk. There was like a 300-foot gap to the nearest sidewalk. So after the fact, I noticed it, we went back, we did another project to connect to that sidewalk. But in my mind, that is really the type of thing that we need somebody embedded in either streets or in planning or in Public Works to figure out those opportunities upfront, so we don't have to go back and fix it afterwards. And I use an example from my ward, but I've seen it all over the city where we have these issues. So I'm sure overall, there are obvious constraints within the budget. I have no doubt that it's difficult to fund other positions, but I think, and I hope in next year's budget, these things get a little bit more consideration because all the infrastructure money we're going to spend will not be, we will not get the best results unless we, I think, beef up these departments a little bit in 2015 and 2016. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Mr. President, I rise in support of our annual budget and would like to certainly thank the Alderman from the 18th, who I think has certainly attempted to bring a breath of fresh air in terms of reaching out to the people to at least have some input into this annual exercise. The book we get with the ringlets is always intimidating. When all the dust settles, it really isn't that much different, but I think that for the members of the Ways and Means Committee and particularly the Alderman from the 18th, thanks for your time and talent and energy, because I used to do that for eight years and it's just no fun. And we're trying to do more with less, and I think we are, but I think this budget, again, when all the dust settles and a number of bad ideas are floated, it's something that serves the people of the city of St. Louis well, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the boards, I'm sorry, I wasn't on this floor, but I just, Alderman 18th already knows I vote no on budgets, okay? But I do know that you work very hard in times that I've been here. This is the best that I've seen as far as trying to have people have input, have them know what's going on, have, you know, examining the budget. And I'll say this again, since we lost our power under the former Mayor Shamel, because we had such a good Alderman from the 15th, it's hard on anybody who is doing the budget because we are very greatly restricted in what we do than we used to be many years before. So I've been around long enough to know that, so you know that my vote is no, not against what you're doing, but for my own reasons. And are we having a roll call, Mr. President?
If you request it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th, recognize the close.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I'd like to thank those who thanked the committee and the rest of us for the work. We really were trying to do something different. It's just the second year of that in terms of having evening meetings, and it is difficult. You know, basically, the charter says that the Board of Alderman doesn't get the budget till May, and it has to be passed by the end of June. That makes it difficult to try to have interviews with the various departments and to really get any real understanding of what's going on and fully what the needs are and where to find the monies for additional offices. I certainly appreciate the comments of the Alderman from the 24th. That is something that, you know, was brought up in the public discussion on it and the public recommendations to have a particular position like that, but in the time crunch and the dollars that were available, it was difficult to try to find where to put that. Our committees had some discussion about having further discussions on the budget in doing what it can this year on other items and other issues that it feels it needs to address, or at least setting the stage for those things to be able to be addressed in future budgets. So you'll be seeing some of that as well, and we invite other Alderman people to come to that particular meeting. We have a diverse committee, and I'd like to both congratulate and thank the committee of women and men, of African-Americans, of Caucasians. It's a very diverse committee. In fact, 250 years ago, when the city was started, practically every member on that committee would not have been a member of that committee because of the restrictions that the city had at that time. Women were not elected to public office, nor were African-Americans, and that's the majority of the committee. In fact, I think that committee will only have one member left if it was 250 years ago. One of the statements that we made in opening the budget process is pointing that out that St. Louis is celebrating 250 years, but that committee is beginning to represent the diversity of this city, and thanks to our president for making those appointments, but that it has been 250 years of struggle and development, and that the city still has a long way to go. So with that, we do renew our motion as we continue to try to further along this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 23rd, that we perfect Board Bill Number 1 Committee Substitute. Has been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Kusen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kusen. 19 aye votes, 6 no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 18th, perfected Board Bill Number 1 Committee Substitute. Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules in order to place committee substitute for Board Bill Number 1 on the third reading calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, I intend second, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? It's been a request. Well, that's all. I also want to thank the members of Ways and Means. The guys worked really hard with the evening meetings and everything. Let's give them a round of applause and thanks for all of their hard work. Been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 12th. It's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading, third reading consent.
Board Bills 59, 60, 61, 64, and 81.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize.
Could you move Board Bill 64 onto the third reading calendar?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Move Board Bill 64 from third reading consent to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for passage of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, I can't hear you. Was your vote aye? Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Kusen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kusen. 24 aye votes, no no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 7th and third reading final passage of aforementioned bills. Third reading reporter engrossments.
Board Bill 1 Committee Substitute Sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy. The budget for fiscal year 2014 through 2015 fiscal year containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 1 Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for third reading and final passage of committee substitute for Board Bill Number 1.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Been moved and seconded that we third reading, fine pass, Board Bill Number 1 Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. I can't hear you.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
No.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey.
Madam Clerk, please make-
Alderwoman Cruzen.
Alderman from the 25th changes vote.
19 a-votes, 4 no-votes.
By your vote, you abstain in motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read and finally pass, Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute.
Board Bill Number 64, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a quick claim deed to AGC of St. Louis Education Foundation for a city-owned property located in City Block 480, which property is known as 1230 Graton, upon receipt of and in consideration of a sum of $150,000 containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 64.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm here today on Board Bill 64.
You need to make the motion-
I'd like to move for passage of Board Bill 64.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 15th. Please proceed.
Thank you. I am here on Board Bill 64. Construction Career Center operates and has for a number of years a high school, charter high school, near the Clinton Peabody neighborhood, and they already owned the school itself, which they purchased from the St. Louis City Public Schools. They've been leasing the parking lot from the city and have made a number of improvements on that land, including a workshop for their students, a track, and some other things. And at this point in time, since they have made such investment, they have worked out a deal that will allow them to purchase the land and continue to have it be a positive place for city residents and for the students of CCC.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th?
Members of the board, will the Alderwoman from the 6th board yield the questions?
Alderman from the 6th will yield. Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
How many acres is this parcel?
I don't have the acreage in front of me.
Okay. Did we have an appraisal done?
I let the comptroller's office handle that, Jim Garabaglia.
Okay, but did we have an appraisal or no appraisal on this?
I don't believe there was an appraisal.
The, you know, the only thing is, we should have an appraisal so that the taxpayers, even though you think this is such a magnanimous effort, we need appraisals so that the taxpayers feel like they're getting a fair dollar for the value of the property that they're selling on a going-forward basis. In most cases, we do get appraisals, because that's kind of our obligation as representatives of the citizens here of the city. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd?
Just maybe a quick answer, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong. I said in the committee on this, I think that they're paying, the Alderman from the 6th could correct me, but I think they're paying a dollar a year lease on it, and the numbers didn't work out that well. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the lease was so, if I remember right, from the committee hearing-
Alderman from the 23rd, if you would like her to yield for questioning?
Yes.
Alderman from the 6th, will you yield for question?
I will.
Alderman from the 23rd, please proceed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember from the committee hearing, the lease on it that they were paying was so minimal that Darlene's office felt that we would come out dollars ahead selling it, and maybe I'm wrong. I can't remember-
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious, just so I can refresh my memory.
All right, excellent. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th?
The other thing I'd like to point out, if we give them, quote, "a deal," to charge them a dollar a year, right, then we turn around and we give it to them for below appraisal value, did we get ripped off once, or did we get ripped off twice? And that would be my only perspective economically. The reason they gave them a dollar a year was because they did the improvements. And now that the improvements are there, they weren't paying for them, and now they want them basically without an appraisal value. That's all.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th, you recognize the close.
Thank you. I'm just standing in support of this. We have worked very closely with attorneys for the city, the comptroller's office, and the AGC, to make sure this was a good deal for a school that's doing a great benefit to the community and still allow the city to make some money on the deal, so I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, third read and finally pass, Board Bill Number 64. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Pass.
Alderwoman Young.
I didn't hear you.
She said-
Thank you. Alderman Conway.
No.
Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Cruzen. 21 a-votes, 1 no-vote.
By your vote, abstain in motion, Alderman from the 6th, and third read and finally pass, Board Bill Number 64.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 59, 60, 61, 64, 81, and 1 Committee Substitute.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. With dispensal line item 21, second reading.
Resolution 83, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Aldermen pursuant to ordinance 64994, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the Appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account Funds for fiscal year 2014.
Alderwoman from the 2nd, you recognize on resolution number 83.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The chairwoman of the committee had to leave, and the sponsor of the resolution. The Parks Committee met this morning at 9:00 a.m., then adopted the resolution. If you have any reference, it's in your packets. This does not call for a vote of the Florida Board of Aldermen, just a report from the committee.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Ms. Lane, I saw them finish business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Wednesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Wednesday, Health and Human Services Committee meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Thursday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's Thursday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. Friday, the office is closed, 4th of July holiday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 8th?
Again, Mr. President, we will have a Transportation Committee meeting on Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m., and it'll talk about the trash can, the funding of emptying the trash cans.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderman from the 3rd and the 10th due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We also have our licensed collector with us today. Thank you for coming out joyously. Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn our meeting until Thursday, July 3 at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.